Members, this is the session on security. I welcome the secretary, Mr. John Lee, and undersecretary, Mr. Sonny Au, and permanent secretary, Mrs. Marion Lai, as well as their team. I will first ask the secretary to make an opening remark, and then members will ask questions. Members, please press the request to speak button if you would like to ask any questions. Please keep your speech to within five minutes. Chairman, in the draft estimate for the new financial year allocation for the two policy areas under security, Bureau's responsibility will account for $48.9 billion, representing 8% of total government expenditure. On law and order, the major operational targets of the Hong Kong Police Force for 2019 are to combat violent crimes, riots, syndicated and organized crimes, dangerous drugs, and quick cash crimes, to promote cybersecurity and combat technology crimes, and to ensure public safety and step up counterterrorism work. There will be an additional 79 additional posts created in the Police Force in 2019-20. These are mainly for increasing manpower support for the Hong Kong Jiahe Macau Bridge, strengthening police force capability in tackling trafficking in persons and protecting foreign domestic helpers, and enhancing Hong Kong's capabilities in anti-money laundering and counterterrorism financing, etc. The West Kowloon Terminal of the XRL and the Hong Kong Jiahe Macau Bridge were commissioned in September and October this year, last year. Hang Yuen Wai Boundary Control Point is expected to come into operation in 2019-20. The frontline law enforcement departments will get prepared to ensure smooth operation of the new control point. Since the commencement of the comprehensive review of the Strategy of Handling Non-Reformant Claims in early 2016, various measures have yielded considerable results. The numbers of illegal immigrants and non-reformant claims have dropped significantly by 80% from the peak. The Immigration Department has basically completed the screening of the backlog of over 10,000 claims. Although there are still some 6,000 appeal pending handling by the Torture Claims Appeal Board, we expect the number to drop gradually within, and their handling will be completed in two years. The government will continue with various suitable measures, including the submission of an amendment bill to improve the screening procedure, and we will ensure that sufficient resources are available to handle the claims and appeals efficiently and fairly. We will also put in more effort to expedite the removal of rejected claimants from Hong Kong. In relation to combating trafficking in persons, in March last year, the government established a high-level inter-bureau departmental steering committee to combat trafficking in persons. It is chaired by the C S four A. An action plan with 40 new measures was promulgated. The Hong Kong Police Force Immigration Department, C N E Department, Labor Department, and Department of Justice will create a total of 98 posts to fully and vigorously implement the measures promulgated in the action plan. In relation to the territory-wide identity card replacement exercise, the exercise started in 2018. The Immigration Department will continue to replace existing smart Hong Kong ID cards of all holders in faces at the nine smart identity card replacement centers. The Fire Services Department will have 135 new posts in the new financial year, mainly for increasing ambulance shift, serving as ambulance hospital controllers, operating the railroad fire appliance procured for firefighting and rescue operations in railway conduits and tunnels, as well as strengthening the department's capability in handling maritime incidents and supporting high-angle rescue operations. Last year, the government worked with the U R A, the Urban Renewal Authority, to launch the Fire Safety Improvement Work Sustained Scheme. We have received over 2,500 applications. Successful applicants were notified gradually, and there will be assigned case officers who will provide appropriate assistance and follow-up. We hope that this subsidy scheme, together with a series of improvised measures promoted by the Fire Services Department, could facilitate owners of all composite buildings to carry out improvement works as soon as possible in order to comply with the fire safety requirements under the Fire Safety Buildings Ordinance. The C S D Correctional Services Department is committed to improving correctional facilities, including installing electric locks of systems in Stanley Prison, Thailand Centre for Women, and Pickok Correctional Institution, and replacing and enhancing the closed-circuit television systems in 11 correctional facilities, including Stanley Prison, Pickok Prison, and Hailing Child Correctional Institution, etc. The C S D will develop smart prison for the sustainable development of correctional system, using innovation and technology, including piloting the health science monitoring system, video analytic monitoring system, and passage surveillance system to modernize correctional facilities with a view to enhancing the efficiency of prison management and level of security. The C S D will provide diversified and market-oriented vocational training to persons in custody, having regard to the overall situation and demand of the employment market, with a view to enhancing the ability to be reintegrated into society. I myself and my representatives will be happy to answer questions. There are 16 members who have pressed the request to speak button. I will read out their names. Claudia Moore, Alvin Young, Charles Mock, Gary Fan, Lan Chee Chang, Priscilla Loong, Pun Siu Ping, Christopher Jung, Chang Chung Tai, Fernando Jung, Tony Tsai, Helena Wong, Elizabeth Port, Ray Chan, Mr. Lam Cheung Ting, and Shiu Ka Cheng, Ms. Claudia Moore. I would like to very quickly ask, because the secretary said that, well, one of the major operational targets is to promote cybersecurity. But the government has been abusing the offense of dishonest use of computers. The court has already given a judgment. Well, previously, you have frightened netizens by using indiscriminately this offense. What are you going to do now? And I now want to ask about question 23, the one-way permit. Well, I think it's ridiculous that you ask the question, and they give you a completely different answer. They said that they would exchange views with mainland authorities on a one-way permit. I asked you, how are these exchanges done? How many times have you met them? What is the cost involved? And whether you would, by faces, take back the decision-making of one-way permit applications back to Hong Kong? And you have given us a totally different answer. Well, as we all know, that regarding family reunion, of course, we won't oppose to that. But now, they can use any reason. And it's rumored that every day about 30 to 40 Communist Party members using different reasons to come to Hong Kong. It seems that you have turned a deaf ear to people's demand. It is very irresponsible. Secretary.
In relation to cybersecurity, well, we're all aware of the judgment of the C F A in relation to section 161. The D O J will take that into account and consider how to proceed in the future. There are three offenses to deal with, general cases like this, say, for example, loitering, disorderly in public places. Well, if the... If it is a case that disrupts public law and order, the D O J would consider taking action. I think that, well, is it the case that these three offenses you have just named covered acts like peeping tom? I myself and the D O J agree that legislative work is required. That is a very clear stance. We are anxious as well. We understand that the Law Reform Commission has made a proposal about peeping. We would conduct consultation, and we will actively pursue the line of legislative amendment. In relation to one-way permit, we have had numerous discussions here. I understand that there are different views, but we have to act in accordance with the basic law. In a motion debate in the Legco, I have explained that we have communicated with them. And as a result of our communications, there are adjustments and changes to the arrangement. Ms. Moore, you would like to supplement? Please turn on Ms. Moore's microphone. I'm most concerned that you have not reflected Hong Kong people's view on one-way permit to mainland authorities. Mr. Lee, anything to add?
We have been exchanging views in our communication. Next, Mr. Alvin Young, four minutes. I want to ask about 165. It's in relation to the quality of Hong Kong Police Force. I can see that in 2018, for permanent police officers involved in serious offenses, the number has increased from 2018, about 20 to 30 people. I believe that most police officers are law-abiding and of high caliber, but I'm very concerned about that, especially when I look at the number of police officers involved in criminal cases. It has increased from 21 to 30. I would like to get an answer. I also see that there is working group set up in relation to the integrity management of the police force. So I would like to hear from the secretary.
I will first speak on a policy level, and then I would defer to the commissioner to answer your question. For a disciplined service, whatever it is, there is a very stringent requirement. If an officer commits misconduct, there is a mechanism to deal with such a breach under relevant ordinances. Integrity management is important. I know that the police has done a lot of work in this regard. Let's hear from the commissioner, Mr. Lo.
Just like Mr. Young, I feel sad about such figures. We see from time to time some bad apples in any discipline services all over the world. I would like to say that the police would have no tolerance of such bad apples, which will affect the image of the police. Well, you talk about 30 people. Yes, it is a significant increase compared to 15 years, 15 people. But 30 people out of about 30,000 officers, so it's just about 0.001%. Over 99% of the police officers are working very hard, but it doesn't mean that we would tolerate that. One case is too many. The working group has started two measures. First, it's guidelines in relation to misconduct, and two measures to enhance the sense of belonging and loyalty, so that the police officers will be mindful of their behavior. Well, if police officers see that there are signs that another officer might have committed misconduct or going that way, we hope that they would render support to them. There is also education, management, punishment, as well as rehabilitation. We have put in these measures for a very long time, and we have seen that they are effective. Sorry for interruption. Are you confident that next year, when we come back here, the figure will drop? Do you have faith that it will drop?
Well, we would like to identify the reason why someone would break the law. But there are different factors and causes to each different case. We have done some work. If you ask me, of course, I am confident. But would there be new situations arising in the future? I can't tell. But we have the determination and the confidence to get rid of all bad apples in the force. Mr. Charles Mock, I would like to follow up on 148. That is in relation to dishonest access to computer with criminal or dishonest intent. I have been asking about the different types. This time, again, you told us that you have not kept a breakdown of the information. I've been asking for five years. Whether it's peeping, criminal intimidation, public order, what is the classification? I want to know how you have abused the offense. You did not admit that it was an abuse, but now, the court ruling has made it very clear that it is wrong to keep expanding the scope of this offense. You said that you're very anxious to try to deal with it. In 2015, when I moved a motion, why didn't you say that? Your predecessor said that, well, we will choose an offense that will get us a conviction more easily. And you have caused a public panic. And the L R C has, many years ago, proposed an offense that deals with peeping. My question is, out of the number of cases that charges, under which charges have been laid, well, apart from taking up skirt photos, you say that there are three offenses that you can use. How are you going to deal with existing cases? Can you change the offense? How many cases will be affected? And what is the number? The C F A has given an ultimate interpretation in relation to the interpretation and application of access to computer with criminal or dishonest intent. We have to ensure that all future prosecutions and law enforcement actions are in accordance with the law. But before the C F A has delivered judgment, I would like to say that it was the court that convicted the defendants. Yes, the C F A has given a clear interpretation of the application of section 161. Well, according to court ruling, is such an act is conducted with dishonest intent? No, the court said that you have been expanding the scope of the offense, and that itself is wrong. Please don't blame lower levels of court. And I've been telling you the same thing for many years. Why are you still trying to argue on this point? I would like to know how you're going to deal with existing cases, because you have created the problem yourself. It is the Security Bureau. Well, a decision was made based on the interpretation of the law at that time. That's what I wanted to say. Well, the L R C proposed a voyeurism offense. From the information I have, the proposal was made in 2018, and they are in the process of collecting public opinions to find out how to implement the proposal. And I have explained that we would like to have the proposals so that we can take actions targeting the action themselves.
Would you like to supplement on the number of cases affected by this? We don't have any figure. Okay, please provide supplementary information after the meeting. Mr. Gary Fan, four minutes. Oh five three, oh five six. About the trend of admission of tenant schemes. I've asked a number of questions in the past three years. Among the five, under the five schemes, the total number of people emitted, we've seen an increasing trend, and also an increasing trend for those who have been given right of a bow. 2018, more than 10,000. And every year, on average, 50,000 people were approved for extension of stay. So for just one year, it will be more than the number of new arrivals under the one-way permit. If this trend continues to rise, the population pressure arising from the population increase will be tremendous. How would the administration act as the gatekeeper? He said that this will be done under two plus three plus three, or two plus six in respect of extension of stay. In assessing such application for extension of stay, what criteria would you refer to? And what kind of income level would you require? And how do you make sure that information about the employer is correct? And that the performance is in line with the policy objective for such admission schemes? If the threshold is too low, you create a big loophole for people to falsify things, and then we'll have more and more people emitted into Hong Kong. I asked the C I Bureau, Innovation and Technology Bureau, about how checks are carried out. They say they will just rely on the documentation submitted. Secretary for Security, I'll talk about the policy, and then the Immigration. The Director of Immigration will talk about the assessment of applications. Well, we know all over the world, we want to attract talent. Various places have to compete for talent. With general employment policy and various admission schemes for mainland talent, etc., we require a high level of educational attainment, usually a degree holder, or in that particular field, they have special abilities or skills. Whether it's a general admission scheme or admission scheme for talent, the information is open and transparent. You can find the information on the website of Immigration Department. For example, a good educational background. I talk about how you assess and the applications. As I've said, various places compete for this group of talents. If we don't do it, we will lose out. Director of Immigration, well, generally speaking, we'll look at the credentials, the degree that he holds, and whether he has skills or expertise, which Hong Kong is less. Also, look at the salary. If necessary, we can check all the documents and clarify the points to see if there's any falsification. All such processes will be handled very strangely. Four minutes, Dr. Priscilla Lo. It's S B O two O. In regard to the handling of non-reformant claims and the arrangement to reduce the backlog, which the administration says has been quite significant in its effect. Under the Duty Lawyer Scheme, to handle such claims, there has been some layoff exercises. And I know one or two of them. They are very experienced. They offer very good quality. They were, but they were involved right from the very beginning. Earlier this year, the Chief Justice said there were backlogs of claims in the courts, and they had to redeploy judges to handle non-reformant claims. The number is a few hundred to a thousand. So it was a cry for help because of the huge pressure on judicial manpower. You have streamlined the procedure. As you have claimed, you have streamlined the procedure. My concern is that you have reduced the manpower. Are you going to shift the pressure to the judiciary? That's not what we want to see. That's not the way to handle the backlog of claims. We attach importance to quality of work. At one point, I suggested that you should approach more law firms to handle such cases, such claims professionally. You must have some people, some department in charge of this. And now you have been laying off people. Have you resolved the problems? Will the new cases be handled by inexperienced people? And then those will turn into judicial review cases? Because J R O cases usually are about the due process and whether the procedures are properly carried out. Dr. Lo, I think we should differentiate two things. First, what we do within the government's structure to handle such claims? First, the Immigration Department will assess the case, and then it would judge to be substantiated or not. And then we have the Appeal Board. The Appeal Board will come to a ruling as to whether the claim is substantiated or not. So that's existing mechanism, existing arrangement. For those who fail in the claims, they should be repatriated. But anyone in Hong Kong can lodge an application for judicial review. Then that's part of the legal proceedings, just like anybody else who would like to challenge the action taken by the government. So we are talking about two different things. We are not passing our application, vetting, and assessment work to the courts. I understand that. You have canceled an entire working unit where we find the most experienced people. You have reduced the secretariat staff and the staff for handling such cases. So the question is about the laying off of experienced people. Well, actually, the cases to be handled by the Duty Lawyer Scheme depends on the actual workload. And at peak periods, we need to handle 8,000 cases, and we need that more. And now, with the efforts expanded by our staff in the Immigration Department, we don't have so many cases. So the case law has reduced, and therefore, the... So the case law has reduced and therefore the, the, the demand for service has come down and don't, we don't need so many people to handle those cases. We have expedited the application and therefore there are fewer cases to handle. And therefore, the demand for D L S service has come down. And we'll inform the service provider under D L S on the likely number of cases that they need to handle. That's what, what we have been doing under our current arrangement. Quality will be assured because we will be using the same group of lawyers. All the lawyers are there. It's just that the number of cases that they need to handle will be lower. As a result, the number of lawyers involved will be lower. All these lawyers have been trained and experienced. Mister Pun Shu Ping, four minutes. I want to ask my question. Uh, the reply, oh seven nine. It's about the seven emission scheme. The reply is that up to February twenty nineteen, six thousand five hundred or so people have been emitted. You have eight categories and one of them is others. Thirty seven thousand people emitted under that category. Another category involves ten thousand five hundred. And what about the breakdown for the other categories? So that so that we know what economic sectors these people belong to? Ten thousand of more people earned under twenty thousand dollars. Well, which industry or trade are they in? You mentioned the people with doctorate, master degree or bachelor degree and others seventeen thousand. So what qualification, education qualification do they have? And also for the admission of mainland talent, we have thirteen thousand people emitted under this scheme. And they're under category, the category of others, two thousand three hundred or so. Do we have further breakdowns for this from the Immigration Department? And under the emission scheme, we have a category for art, artistic and cultural sector. On what basis are these people assessed to be suitable for admission? And we have a talent emission scheme. Of course, we are not against the admission of talent by the government. We have four hundred and thirty who, who have, who came before February twenty nineteen and one hundred and thirty emitted under the category of others. Of course, there are five different sectors under this scheme, including recreation and sports. So I'd like to get more breakdowns. And also, I want to ask a question about the establishment of immigration staff. From May, in the year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, you have added six staff for the emission scheme for mainland talents and professionals. And for the non- local graduates, you add six for innovation and technology, three. So altogether, you increased the establishment by fifteen staff. Uh, the number of people emitted under the emission scheme for mainland talents and professionals has not increased significantly. Why do you need to add so many people to the working teams? Are you expecting that there will be a lot of people coming forward to apply?
There is a large group of, of questions. I would defer to the Director for Immigration, Mister Zhang. So in relation to the different classification of the types, we have set out the major types of jobs. And there are still some minor ones. But we don't want to make the answer too complicated. That's why we have not included them in the breakdown. But we will give you the information after the meeting for your reference. Regarding our establishment on visa management. Yes, uh, there was a time when with an increased workload, it wasn't matched by an increased level of man, of manpower. We have also enhanced our inspection on visas. So we, we would have more manpower to deal with the additional work. Thank you. Well, perhaps you will give us the information in supplementary information. Next, Mister Christopher Zheng, four minutes. I would like to ask about one nine two. In relation to the cross boundary by movement of physical currency and bearer negotiable instruments ordinance. Well, between July and last year and February this year, there has been over fourteen thousand declarations. In relation to currency, it's about hundred and sixty four billion dollars. On average, it's eleven million dollars per declaration. In relation to goods, six thousand four hundred and ninety, involving eight hundred and thirty billion dollars. On average, is the amount declared is eleven million dollars. Is that normal? Will the Secretary provide additional information to us? What are these cash items? Are they mostly um hard cash securities or um shares or instruments? Are they from the mainland or from other parts of the world? Compared to other international cities, are we on the high side or not? When the C N E Department received the declarations and they uh, when they are aware that the declaration is up to eleven million dollars, would they ask the um traveler for the reasons for such a large amount? I would defer to the Director for Customs and Exize. About the implementation of the cross-boundary movement of physical currency and bearer negotiable instruments ordinance, there are over ten thousand visitors involved, involving um over one hundred and ninety billion dollars. We see that on average, it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to maybe a billion or so. Over ninety percent of the declarations were made by financial institutions. And we will vet every application very carefully. Whether is any doubt, we would conduct investigation. So far, we have not identified any cases that require further action. The member asked about comparison. We haven't done such a comparison yet. And we can't tell you that whether it, we're on the high side or the low side. Anything to say to in your follow-up, Mister Zheng? Did you ask visitors why they would bring such a large amount of with them instead of using electronic means? But of course, visitors will bring cash for their own reasons. What we care about is whether such an act contravenes the law. If necessary, we will follow up and conduct investigation. Chen Chong Tai. I would like to ask about one thirty, one eight five eight and one six four. They are in relation to the police force. There was an incident last year. A married superintendent went with a married woman to a safe house uh to do hanky panky things. Well, that's a euphemism. I have questions to ask about the married superintendent. Has he breached any code or regulations? Well, we have the right to ask about the number, locations of safe houses and the cost involved. And in the past three years, how many police officers have wrongly used safe houses? However, for the three questions, you gave us the same answer. You said that, well, it is, it involves secret operations of the police. So when it comes to monitoring, use, operation arrangements, they don't have to give us an answer. If you say that there is a vigorous mechanism in place, why would, what I've said has happened? And people are concerned. I think there may be a suspected case of misconduct in public office. Has that person been penalized? Did he have to go through any disciplinary hearing? Any information that you can give us? Well, after this case of abuse of safe houses, have you put in place any measures to prevent future recurrence of such an incident? I will first give you some general answer and then, and then I would defer to the Commissioner for Police. I understand that members have asked, well, they have been asking about um re, um details on reward and special services. We have a vigorous mechanism in place to ensure proper use of such resources. Apart from the internal audit of the police, senior officers of the Audit Commission will also conduct a separate, an independent audit on the breakdown to make sure that we have made proper use of the funds. Of course, the police will have to strictly follow uh rules and to deal with disciplinary cases. Mister Lo. The case is still under investigation, so we will not make any comments. The police attach a lot of importance on the conduct and integrity of police officers. If it is found after investigation that, that there is any misconduct, there is any breach of any regulations and the law, we will follow it up very seriously. Well, sensitive information as well as a secret operation information is involved. That's why I can't give you an answer. I don't think you will carry on an investigation into whether it is an extramarital affair. I just want to ask. Well, I ask about um reasons about, well, in general, where, where is the location of the safe house? And how can that superintendent know when to use it and know the password? Commissioner, well, if there is any breach, we will seriously follow it up. Next, Doctor Fernando Zheng. I would like to ask a number of questions. First, I would like to ask about question number four. The replacement of, for smart I D card. In the replacement exercise, exercise, a person is allowed to bring with them two elderly people to deal with the replacement. I think it's a very good arrangement because elderly people can be accompanied and don't, and they don't have to go back and to twice. But it, under the, this arrangement, people with disabilities are not allowed to be brought along. There are people who suffer from autism or intellectual disability. If you require them to go and apply for a replacement of the I D card, it will be very difficult. So I'd like to ask the Immigration Department, can they extend this arrangement to people with disability? That means they, someone can bring them along for the replacement. Let's hear from Mister Zhang, the Director.
We have make some arrangement under the new I D application system, some caring arrangements, including uh allowing to see elderly members of the, the family of the applicant to go at the same time. We also arrange, make arrangement for services to be provided to elderly homes and homes for the disabled. As regards, we can extend this to other people in need. But we would seriously consider this having regard to our resources and other factors. We certainly try to improve our service. We would consider this in due course. I hope you can do this. You can extend the service to the disabled as soon as you can. Uh, I want to ask some questions about S B one eight five and one ninety. And that is the wages paid to those inmates. On average, they will be paid five hundred to six hundred dollars. For those who are about to, to be discharged, they will only have a few hundred dollars in their pocket. So rehabilitation will be difficult, especially for those who have no family members outside to help them. And under S B one nine O, uh, you talk about forty full-time and part-time vocational training courses in twenty nineteen. But you do not mention the number of inmates participating in those courses. How many people can you take, take on? And how many are under twenty years old? Uh, how can you promote this and allow more inmates to be admitted to such training courses? And Mister Wu, Commissioner of Correctional Services. Well, actually, since the inmates are provided with all the necessary necessities, so the money they earn can be used for buying snacks or for for, for some, for savings, so that they can use the money when they are discharged. If they need help, we would liaise with other government departments to, to provide assistance, including accommodation and the financial assistance in the initial stage of discharge. Uh, on the number of places, we have fourteen hundred annually. According, in accord, in, in line with our past experience, the number would be sufficient. But, but if there's a sudden increase, we can make adjustments accordingly. As for the places for youth training, all young inmates would receive education for half the date and vocational training for the other half. So all young offenders, young inmates are, are receiving vocational training. Mister Tony Chan, I want to follow up some questions about S B one three nine. Uh, number of prosecutions and arrests in respect of protests of public assemblies. Uh number of prosecutions and arrests in respect of protests or public assemblies. It seems that in the past three years, the number has stabilized. It's about twelve to thirteen thousand a year for those uh which the police was not informed. And then the number of people arrested or prosecuted has declined significantly, uh which is good. The gov- the police arrested more than a thousand people for the illegal occupation central movement. And then you make appointments with forty-eight of the organizers. Nine of them uh have now been prosecuted. It's almost five years since the occupation movement, occupation central movement. What are you going to do with the rest? I'm not saying that you must press prosecution because it's been four or five years now that if you drag your feet like that, it may not be fair to those people. I know this may have to do with the Department of Justice. But can the police and the Security Bureau update us on the progress? Have you done uh all all that required of you? And now you are awaiting uh the reply from the Department of Justice for further for further action? I would first of all respond uh by describing the general picture. During the twenty fourteen occupation central movement, nine hundred ninety-five people were arrested by the police as who was suspected of committing various offenses. Forty-eight people uh were arrested after the movement. Uh twen- ten, two hundred and twenty-five people have have been or are under some legal procedures. One hundred sixty-nine people have completed the um relevant procedures, one hundred twenty-seven convicted, forty-two seven bound over. And what are the offenses involved? Illegal assembly, possession of offensive weapons, uh criminal damage, assaulting police officers, raped, possession of dangerous drugs, and public nuisance. Uh the you know, the case which for which the judgment has just been delivered. I'll leave the details, further details to the Commissioner. Uh Mister Stephen Lo, Commissioner of Police. Uh we are maintaining close communication with the Department of Justice and we are taking the necessary investigation. If we have sufficient evidence, we will take further action. Mister Chair. Chairman, of course, I hope that they can make the decisions as soon as possible because if this strikes on, it may not be um fair to those affected. I want to ask some questions about fifty-nine and sixty-seven about the the number of people coming to Hong Kong through various boundary checkpoints, especially the West Kowloon Station of the high-speed road and Hongkou Bridge boundary crossing facilities. Uh the numbers have now stabilized. Do you have sufficient manpower? Or are you over provided with manpower because of the high the ex- high expected turnout in the initial stage where operations uh are smooth generally, but there are peak periods when the police, the immigration, and the Customs and Customs Department have to um do some temporary redeployment. We have considered all these factors in come up with the manpower position. We think the the current levels of manpower is appropriate. Doctor Henan Wang, SB one five nine. It's a question from Mister Paul Che. Uh it's about prostitution and vice establishment. I used to be a member of the IPCC. I'm I'm grateful that at that point, at some at at that time, the police arranged for for members of IPCC to the witness, some race uh to vice establishments in Hong Kong. According to the uh criminal offense ordinance, the penalty is seven years for managing a uh vice establishment. How many vice establishment do we have in Hong Kong? Uh Secretary, uh Commissioner? Uh we don't have any statistic on the number of vice establishment in Hong Kong. If you don't have that, how do you organize your race? Do you just count on your luck? Well, we would act on complaints from the public. You so you don't know where they are and all the number of vice establishment. We don't count them. Well, that's that's strange. You have a we have a uh been given the number of arrests, but you don't know where they are or which uh is a vice establishment. And so you you only know when there's a complaint, right? According to the offense, uh the landlord or the tenant, if there is uh suffers a vice establishment to be operated there, then you can prosecute them. How many successful uh prosecution have there been in the past three years? Did you prosecute the landlord or the tenant? And what's the average prison term metered out? Uh if we if you ask me how many vice establishment are in the entire of Hong and in the entire Hong Kong, we don't have figures. But we have intelligence, uh we have, we do our analysis, we also receive complaints. We'll take action when we suspect that some premises are uh vice establishments. So we do have the number of arrests. As for allowing uh or the letting premises used as vice establishment, we don't have uh a breakdown of figures. How many, do you have any statistics on the number of prosecutions? The maximum penalty is seven years imprisonment. If you talk about past years, of course, we can find the figures. These provided afterwards. If the premises are judged or or judged to be uh for vice establishment, then the police can apply for kosher order under cap one five three A. The kosher order would be valid for six months. What is the limitation period? And would you conduct the raids to the same establishment again before the end of the kosher period? Or or the relevant limitation period? If you don't, you 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 will never be able to apply for a kosher order. If you are not going, if you are not doing this, would you consider maintaining cap one three five A? That is to say that to do away with the requirement of repeated offense of letting and as premises to be used as vice establishment. Well, that is after the conviction, from the fourth to sixteen four, within that year after conviction. If we say that we uh conduct another raid and we can apply for kosher order. But we don't keep statistics. Uh Doctor Wong has asked for some supplementary information. Uh Doc- uh Mister Lo, please look that. We don't have the breakdown figures in our computer system, but I'll do what I can do, I see what I can do. Uh Doctor Elizabeth Qu, I want to talk about uh sneak of photo taking. There was a case, uh the accused was charged with obtaining access to computer with dishonest intent. And the charge was dropped and the accused was spun over with and there's no criminal record registered against him. It seems that the people uh think feel that there's no, there's a vacuum and no one can uh uh that's the suggestion of uh of a new charge of voyeurism. But the well, if you even if we legislate for this new offense, it would take some time. So in the meantime, how are you going to the take action against of offenders of this nature in private premises?
I would like to ask about the abuse of non-refulment claimant, a claim. I know that the administration has done a lot of work. We see the backlog has dropped. They are now um well, asking for appeals and judicial review. So still, there is an outstanding number of cases of about ten thousand dollars in the past few years. They have used about um five, a lot of money. When will you deal with these outstanding ten thousand cases? And from the information from reply number five, I see that every year there are about one thousand cases of non-refulment claims involved in criminal cases. In twenty eighteen, the case has, number of cases has dropped. However, there is an increase regarding dangerous drugs. How are you going to curb this trend? In relation to the CFA's um judgment on access to access to computer with criminal or dishonest intent. As I've said that, if it's a public place, there'll be loitering or um public order disturbance, misconduct in pub, in uh in a public place. But if it is outside a public place, there may be a case of breach of the peace. We can still take the culprit to court. We will definitely proceed with legislative uh exercise. Of course, each case is different and it will be dealt with according to the facts of the case. The police and the DOJ will find the right offense to apply. Regarding non-ref- non-refulment claimants, I'm sure that Ms. Qu is very familiar with the entire process. The Immigration Department has been working very hard to reduce the number of ca- the number of backlog. They have practically cleared the backlog. The next step is for the torture claim appeals board to do their work. Over two or three years, they will be able to clear the backlog. Afterwards, in theory, we'll be able to repatriate the people involved. However, if judicial review is applied for, then we'll have to leave it to the court. As far as I know, there are about three thousand or so people who have applied for judicial review. The court is looking into how to deal with such a large amount of cases. Of course, we have to respect an independent judiciary. What the government can do is to deal with the case to see if it is substantiated or not, and then deal with the appeal uh so as to repatriate them. The government has done a lot of work. The appeals board and the Immigration Department have been working very hard. Uh what remains will be for the court to deal with. Ms. Qu, you would like to add, what about drugs-related cases? There is an increasing trend. I'll defer to the Commissioner. Mister Lo, please be brief. Thank you. Non-refulment claimant, that's that means Form eight holders, there was a sharp drop in twenty eighteen, um a drop from one thousand five hun- one thousand one hundred and fifty cases uh by three hundred ninety-two people, twenty-five percent regarding dangerous drugs, an increase of three point five percent by seven people. Actually, the situation regarding Form eight holders, it's has greatly improved. We will monitor these cases. These um the actions will be under the leadership of the OSTB, OCTB, the Organized Crime and Trial Bureau. I would like to follow up on thirty-six and thirty-seven. And in thirty-six, I asked if there is any guideline with the Immigration Department for the frontline officers in relation to cases involving transsexual persons. What assistance would be given to transsexual persons or people of sexual minority? And if there is any training given to officers? The government said that everyone is treated equally. And well, they said that there will be training in relation to um anti-discrimination, uh et cetera, but there is no sensitivity training. It's not a problem of treating everyone equally. Law enforcement officers may have very low sensitivity when dealing with them. There may be communications problems which may give rise to conflicts when they deal with people of sexual minority. We have spent um well, uh some time to come up with guidelines for uh medical offices. Later, it will be expanded to teachers. However, there is nothing for law enforcement officers. Say, for example, I mentioned Immigration Department here because a transsexual person may not be able to change the gender on their identity documents even after they've gone through the sex reassignment surgery. They told us that, well, uh the Immigration Department may detain them or may make things difficult for them or will um treat them quite harshly. I don't blame frontline officers. There are some cases involving police officers. They, I won't use the word discrimination. It's a lack of understanding. They thought that even the evidence is toxic and they would write down it belongs to a fag, uh so- stuff like that. I think that you need to give it further consideration. Training to enhance their sensitivity and understanding towards a sexual minority should be given because this will be conducive to reducing conflicts. Please listen to me. In relation to reply number thirty-seven is about the XRL. It was commissioned in September. The Hongkou Bridge was commissioned in October. Over just two or three months, well, um number of rejection ca- number of rejected cases with um documents not in order for XRL is six hundred and sixty. For Lo Wu, which is the busiest control point, over the year is less than six hundred cases. Did you think about why? Is it something to do with colocation? Because under the conventional um approach, well, people will have their documents checked at the starting point and they will be turned away if the documents are not in order. But now you wait for them to arrive here before you check their documents. Maybe that is the reason why the yeah, we have six hundred cases or so. So number thirty-five is for comments and thirty-six is a question. I will say something about sexual minorities. I thank Mister Chen for the comments and I will forward the comment to different departments for their consideration. The second part, I will defer to the um Director. Mister Zhang, about number of rejection cases. From the figure alone, uh most of them are in cases of improperly documented uh people. But there is no further breakdown, whether it's uh there is no visa or the travel documents. This is a new control point. When visitors come to Hong Kong, they may not be aware of visa requirements. We will enhance our publicity so that visitors will have a better understanding of our requirements. Mister Chen, you do need to conduct an analysis. This is not about being new or old. You come via Lo Wu or via the XRL station or Hongkou Bridge. There's no direct correlation with um a document. Uh, there's no direct correlation with, um, uh, documentation preparation. For the XRL, three months, six hundred cases, Lo Wu, a year, less than six hundred. You do need to look into it. Thank you. Next, Mr. Lam, checking four minutes. I would like to follow up on sixty-one. Regrettably, the administration did not answer my question directly. Well, for individual visit endorsement, uh, that is, uh, G endorsement, it covers forty-nine cities, including Shenzhen. There is, there are different types, once every three months, uh, once every three months, uh, four times a year or one time a year. I asked the administration whether there is any restriction on the number of applications under the individual, uh, and visit endorsement. However, the administration did not give me an answer. I will answer for you. Yes, you can make multiple applications. I have got confirmation from frontline officers of the department as well as visitors themselves. Well, for those with individual visit endorsement, even when they live in Shenzhen, they don't have to apply for the, um, one week, visit per week endorsement. They can, under the individual visit endorsement, when they go back, they will make another application. So it's not subject to restriction of, um, um, uh, once every three months or three times every three months. That mean, the situation is happening under the nose of, uh, immigration officers. That means these people can come to Hong Kong four, five times a day just to engage in parallel goods trading under the individual visit endorsement. You said that, well, one trip per week is conducive to controlling the number of visitors coming to Hong Kong. But the fact is that, uh, people living in the forty-nine cities don't have to follow this. Well, if you live in Shenzhen, it's even more relaxed. So will you talk to mainland authorities to tell them, uh, the policy intent? Once every three months means once every three months and not endless times over three months or endless times over a year? Secretary, I will first tell you about my understanding, and then I will see if, uh, the director have any, has anything to add. The two policies are different. I know, I understand that, Mr. Lam, fully understand that there is a difference. Of course, I will try to find out if, uh, what Mr. Lam said has indeed happened. But the individual visit scheme and the one trip per week, uh, endorsement for Shenzhen residents are two completely different policies. But they are all tourism policies. How are they different? How are they different in nature? One is an individual visit scheme policy, the other one is one trip per week. But for one trip per week, it's done on an individual basis, not in a group. So tell us, uh, in reality, do they come to Hong Kong many times a day? Mr. Zhang? My understanding is that for, uh, once, uh, a month or once every three months, it's about, uh, the validity of the period of the vi, validity period of the visa, once uh, over three months. But after that, they can make an app, another application to come again. But twenty dol, twenty yuan, uh, you can use your, uh, octopus card to, to make payment at the, just before the control point. Will you, uh, forward our view to mainland authorities? But this is about mainland arrangements. Uh, that is, after they've used the visa, how long do they have to wait for another application? We will try to talk to them. If it is a problem, we will, uh, reflect our views. Next, Mrs. Xu Ka Chen, four minutes. Thank you. I would like to follow up on one eight-two and one eight-eight. For one eight-two is asked by Mr. Ah Nok Kin, is in relation to, um, uh, prison schemes, there are two of them. And according to the administration, they, they say that, um, for the release under supervision scheme and pre-release employment scheme, there has been, uh, a drop for twenty fifteen sixteen, number of cases was forty-one, uh, cases, uh, two, just about twenty cases, uh, in twenty eighteen nineteen. How come there is a drop in the number of applications? Well, does the, um, community, uh, that's the steering committee, he, community, uh, the Committee on, uh, Community Support for Rehabilitated Offenders, have they done any, uh, can, have they done any assessment or analysis to find out why?
Uh, my second question is that when, uh, ex-offenders want to get jobs, it's very difficult. Uh, would the committee, or has the Committee on Community Support for Rehabilitated Offenders done something to help them? So that more, um, employers will know about the pre-release, uh, scheme for, uh, offenders? And I also ask a question, uh, a follow-up question to the one raised by Dr. Elizabeth Quat, that is smart, uh, prison. You want to use, uh, IT to help you, uh, manage prisons and correctional institutions. Uh, so apart from, uh, managing the inmates, would you also be doing the same in respect of your officers? Because, uh, they are bound to be black sheep. Would the smart, uh, prison scheme be, uh, um, applied to the management of, uh, your officers, including those who abuse their powers? And also the, uh, video analy, analytic monitor system? Uh, what's the scope of the monitoring? And, uh, what's the risk of, um, unauthorized release of, uh, the videos? Because that has happened previously. And also, uh, what's the, uh, mental impact on the inmates? I'm not talking about, uh, whether the system or the camera, uh, working properly or not, but, but, uh, on the mentality and, uh, physical, um, mental, uh, stress in, imposed on inmates. Uh, let me talk about this release under supervision, uh, scheme. There's a dedicated, uh, committee to handle such cases. Uh, the reports, uh, on applicants are compiled by my department. And, uh, why was the, uh, success rate recently, uh, rather low? Well, each case is different. I cannot really answer the question on the, uh, on behalf of the, um, committee. As regarding Committee on Community Support for Rehabilitated Offenders, well, the committee would give us advice on how to improve, uh, the employment scheme. Uh, the member talked about the difficulty in getting jobs of, uh, rehabilitated offenders. The Committee on Community Support for Rehabilitated Offenders have been given us a vice on how to talk to the, uh, how to communicate with the, uh, employers. We have some seven hundred, uh, employers, compassionate employers, who are offering more than two thousand job openings to these offenders. If necessary, we offer, uh, also further assistance. Smart prison, please be succinct. On the question of using smart, uh, prison, uh, system to prevent abuse of power. Well, with, without the system, we attach, always attach importance to the integrity of our, uh, uh, staff. If there are problems, we will deal with them very seriously. As regards the, uh, keeping of video recordings, uh, in, under the smart prison system, well, we would, uh, keep those, uh, videos, uh, for thirty-one days. And there's a, uh, a very serious restriction on who can view those videos. And we would also have a review processes to ensure that the system is compliant with. As for the mental, uh, impact on inmates arising from the smart pr, pr, prison, we would, uh, review the processes carefully and, uh, regular reviews will be conducted. Uh, SB one eight-two, uh, re, which is a question raised by Mr. Xu Ka Chen. I hope that the department would come up, will look at the, whether there are, uh, objective criteria for, under the pre-release employment scheme. If there are no objective criteria, uh, then people don't know what to do. It's, I've been told recently that whether the family members regularly visit the offender will be a factor to consider. Because sometimes the inmate would, uh, tell their families not to come. And, uh, s- sometimes the import, the date of commencement employment will be important. But some, is, I know in some cases, uh, the, uh, the rehabilitated offender or discharged offenders will only be able to report duty after two months of the, uh, after the discharge. And also, we know that, uh, the discrepancies of, uh, terms of conditional employment among the discipline forces of, uh, is very big. Uh, I've learned from some CSD officers that their quarters have, uh, water seepage problems. And we know that seventy percent for the police and eighty percent for the, uh, FSD officers eligible for quarters are getting, getting them. It's that that there's a committee to carry out reviews. And also, we, we, yeah, different ranks in the police and, uh, and the fire services department. Well, I think when things become more extreme, there will be, uh, disputes. Uh, Dr., uh, Mr. Lo, the com, com, Commissioner of Police, you know that in the Western District, uh, the quarters side, uh, are, is very valuable piece of land. You have been giving the quarters, and now you, you also want to develop, redevelop the old quarters. You have submitted an application to the Town Planning Board. Can you not heed the, uh, advice of, uh, the, uh, Central Western District Council? Because eighty percent of the eligible officers are already having, uh, living in quarters. SB one oh-one. Uh, the number of prosecutions, uh, because of, uh, public assemblies and protests, uh, two thou, two, two hundred and seventy-three in twenty fourteen, and then it drops to seventy-one, ninety-five, thirty-two, and eight in successive years. Because the people are now, uh, afraid to come, to take to the street. Uh, well, the maximum penalty can be as high as seven years. You have hired so many, uh, officers. You have, uh, purchased a water cannon, twenty-seven million dollars, and, um, and a pepper spray, the devices. And last question is, uh, again for the Commissioner of Police, if I, well, if I weren't a political member, I, 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 I was, um, it was very difficult to negotiate with the police on the route to, to be used by protesters. Uh, sometimes, uh, we agree with something with the, uh, uh, police officer that we saw, but then, uh, they would, uh, uh, they overturned the, uh, agreement, uh, at the next, in the next moment. Se, Secretary, qua, on quarters. In the twenty fourteen, uh, poli, policy address, we announced eight, uh, quarters projects for different discipline, uh, services. Of course, uh, there's always a gap in, uh, between the, the number of officers eligible and the number of quarters. But we have, uh, all the eight, um, projects approved, and one, uh, has been completed and population intake is now happening, another is about to be completed. We want, uh, the departments to make use of land under the department itself for quarters as well as possible. Uh, regarding the questions on, uh, the police, I will defer to the commissioner. Uh, with regard to the Western District Quarter Site, I understand the district, uh, does have, uh, some needs for the land, but our officers have been asking for more quarters to be built. You mentioned if the allocation ratio is seventy-nine percent for twenty nineteen, twenty, uh, nineteen, uh, twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty. But, uh, it was only seventy-three percent in the previous year. We're not trying to compete with, uh, land, uh, in the, for, for, come, we're not competing for land with other people in the district. But anyway, uh, wherever we identify the site, there will always be a competing need. And this site is the next to the Western District Police Station. So because of security, uh, reasons, we cannot provide pop, community facilities in future quarters. On the question of the route of, uh, to be used for, uh, protesters and, uh, but, but, of course, uh, well, the organizers may want to have a more visible route so that more people will know about the protest. But we have to, uh, balance the community needs. We have provided training to our people. We have a dedicated team to liaise with, uh, uh, protest organizers. As for the, uh, increase in as, establishment, one hundred and seventy-nine officers will be added to the establishment. None of them will be dedicated to the handling of, uh, protests and, uh, public assemblies. Mr. Chen, me term. Or if there's no other member who would like to raise further questions, and I will draw the line here. Uh, one seven nine. Uh, I'm talking about uh, advance of medical, the instruction given by the, the terminally ill. Uh, the policy address in twenty eighteen, the announce that, that they would be allowed to make the, the decision on what they want to do when they are terminally ill. Uh, for, if, uh, well, actually, the, when the ambulance arrives, uh, the ambulance man would do the CPR because, uh, the ambulance does not know that, uh, their advanced instructions have been made. So the, this, the resuscitation would be carried out until the time the patient arrives at the hospital, and then, uh, the, uh, you may have, uh, successfully, uh, resuscitated the, uh, patient. Uh, he may wonder why, uh, you do, you do not, uh, follow the, the instruction. And, uh, if ultimately the patient pass away, the, the family may blame you for causing further suffering. You say here, there will be a arrangement, which will be, uh, the subject of consultation in twenty nineteen, and the FSD has an open mind. When would the, uh, consultation period start and when will end? You only mentioned twenty nineteen. Uh, Mr. Lee, Darrow Lee, Director of Fire Services. Uh, we are about to conduct a study, and we work with relevant organizations. Uh, I, I may have to, uh, inform the member of the exact, uh, days later. According to the law, uh, an injured person or patient must be provided with first aid before the arrival at the hospital. We know that, uh, uh, the system of advanced, uh, medical instruction, we will tie in. Yeah, that's why I asked this question. Uh, so I hope, uh, after public consultation, there may be a need to amend the law. I hope, uh, the FSD and, uh, the Security Bureau will bear this in, in mind. Next, SB one nine-eight, uh, safety standards that are at the airport. I'm, uh, I'm concerned about, uh, uh, air freight cargo, which will be subject to one hundred percent X-ray scan. I agree with the, uh, re, reply that we need to adopt a multi-point approach. But maybe my question was not put very, uh, accurately. I asked whether the government would waive some fees, uh, royalties, et cetera, at the airport. And the answer was, is that, uh, they are not collected by the government? Uh, yes, maybe I didn't ask the right question. The levies or royalties will be, uh, The levies or royalties will be uh collected by the A A. If one hundred percent X-ray scan is required in the future, should something be done to help the um. Industry to tie over, would you talk to the A A so that such fees, et cetera, can be waived?
Secretary, thank you. Of course, we welcome any views and then we will further consider them. I think Mister Term is aware that, aware of the uh I C A O's requirements, International Civil Aviation Organization. And we will communicate with them to find out the rationale behind such requirements. Next, Mister Holden Chow, four minutes. Thank you. I would like to follow up on one O seven. It's asked by Mister Gary Chan. I would like to follow up on the reply. This is about, um, well, sexual abuse against children or physical abuse against children. According to the reply that for the past three years, the total number of cases of child abuse. Are about eight hundred cases. We understand from press report that the police has, have been doing a lot to combat these cases. But eight hundred cases is still too high. We don't know about the prosecution, number of prosecution, because it's not in the reply. People are scared that there will be some cases not reported. But are there cases that are not reported? If you can give us the number of prosecution or number of convictions, then it would better reflect the uh. Actual situation. Would you have records like this? I'll defer to the Commissioner, Mister Lo.
I thank member for the question. You're right, in the past two years, the number of cases is stand at to eight hundred or so, and there was an increase in twenty eighteen. But if you look at it for the past five years, from twenty thirteen. It dropped from one thousand two hundred and ninety cases to eight hundred and ninety three in um. Twenty eighteen, a drop by thirty one percent, that is four hundred and five cases. Children can't protect themselves, that's why we attach a lot of importance to these cases. Um, we have a child abuse um investigation team in different formations, and these are dedicated teams. We have also enhanced training of officers uh to deal with child abuse cases. We will also timely refer these cases to social welfare organizations and if necessary, apply for a protection order. What's most important is public publicity and education. In twenty eighteen, we have organized eleven talks. Covering one thousand seven hundred teachers, uh. Teachers of primary, secondary and kindergarten, the schools and kindergarten as well as social workers. But we don't have a number of prosecution, we will find the information to give to you. Anything to add, Mister Chow? Yes. I hope that you will be able to give us the prosecution number. Well, the number has dropped from one thousand two hundred to eight hundred over a period of five years. Yes, the initiatives have been effective. I agree with the Commissioner, public education should continue. Next, Mister Ma Feng Kwok, four minutes. I would like to follow, follow up on two hundred in relation to government flying service. In the reply, you said that you have with mainland. And overseas organizations conducted exchanges. So I'd like to ask about the three exchange activities, with what departments and what was, what were they about? Understand that there will be some helicopters being retired. There is a Puma, Super Puma. It has, it was involved in um, in a rescue operation in Sichuan. Will you select helicopters as well as some fixed wing aircrafts to put in the Kai-Tec Park? I would defer to the, the Captain Chen of the Government Flying Service. That was one exchange with the Transportation Department of the mainland. And there is another one with Public Security of the mainland, I stand to be corrected. For Super Puma helicopter that will be retired, we don't have any plans to use them as public exhibition. Is like the fixed wing aircraft we have, we have done. But we will continue to. Keep in view whether we will find similar aircraft. Like the fixed wing aircraft to enhance understanding by the public. Where you said that there, there were exchanges with mainland departments, can you tell us more about the content? What kind of exchange are, is it, was it? Well, it's mainly training of uh, of crew, professional training. Mister Ma? Any joint operations drills? In the past year, as I recall, there was none, but I would double check and then give you a written reply. Next, Mister Wu Ji Yai, four minutes. Thank you. I have two questions to ask. First is number twenty seven. One of the objectives of the Security Bureau is to continue to exchange views with C P G on one-way permit and two-way permit. But after twenty eleven, it seems that there was little views exchanged. Well, you haven't given us a further answer. That means that after twenty eleven, there was no views forwarded to the C P G on it. On the operation of one-way permit and two-way permit. And you have not exchanged views on the problems encountered. If there are exchanges, can you tell us what they are? So that we'll know if the Security Bureau knows about. Uh problems and the concerns of Hong Kong people on one-way permit and two-way permit. The second part. Is quarters, I have received. A lot of uh inquiries from. Discipline service officers. There is a housing shortage. It's not easy for them to be allocated. Uh housing so that they can vacate the staff quarters. A lot of people can't find alternative accommodation, that's why they have to stay in the um. In the staff quarters and they may have to pay a market rate or pay punitive rates. So what it is all about, that they are required to vacate, but they are not allocated alternative housing. Apart from competing for housing resources for allocation, are there any way, other ways? Say for example, sale of home ownership scheme units, will you talk to them to see if priority can be accorded to them? If they uh can get housing, then they can vacate the quarters. Thank you. Two questions. Secretary, one about one-way permit, the other about disciplined service, married quarters. In relation to operations and relevant matters, we have been communicating with mainland authorities. And in the process, we learned that mainland authorities have put in place measures. In response to our views, say for example, over age children. Yes, you have already answered me, but what about after twenty eleven? Because it's been eight years. I was, I was answering you. After twenty eleven, we have. Communicated with mainland authorities over eight phases, there are still um. Measures put in, being implemented in relation to over age children, and the other thing is single mothers. We have received a hundred and sixty requests for assistance, and we have already dealt with a hundred of them. And there are other cases that make use of other ways, not one-way permit, to enable them to come to Hong Kong to visit relatives. About housing and quarters, I thank Mister Wu for expressing um concerns about that. But this involves, but this is not just about discipline service, it's about using housing to help civil servants. Well, I thank you for making the suggestion that we can talk to the housing authority. We'll see what we can do with them. Doctor Fernando Zheng, four minutes. I'd like to ask about one O seven, child abuse cases. Of the child abuse cases, how many of them have been followed up by social workers? The police said that they don't have the information. I find it strange. Because just now, the um Commissioner said that in relation to these cases, you work closely with the social welfare department. I believe that these cases will be referred to social workers. How come you don't, you, you don't have a record? Well, under the social wealth, uh social welfare regime, there will be a cross-discipline. Uh meeting with the participation of the police. I think it's something is missing if the police hasn't kept a record. And the number never tallies. In twenty eighteen, the police has said that there, there are eight hundred and ninety three cases. But according to the social welfare department, one hu- one thousand and sixty four cases. Under the breakdown, sexual abuse against children, according to the police, four hundred and fifty six, according to the social welfare department, two hundred and ninety seven cases. It seems that for the social welfare department, they have a higher number of uh total number of cases, but a lower number. In relation to sexual abuse. How do you deal with this difference? If according to you, there are four hundred or so sexual abuse against children. There is no reason for you not to refer these cases to the social welfare department. Can you explain about the stark difference, Mister Lo? We keep statistics and records for enforcement and uh police operations. Well, there is no such category in our compute system, that's why we don't keep the figure, and I can't answer you. In relation to the differences on other areas, say for example, domestic violence, there is a difference. Some victims only report to the police, but did not go to the social welfare department and vice versa. For the police, we use case as the unit in our statistics. When there is a one report, it is one case. As far as I know, for the social wel- welfare department, they use the um. Person requiring assistance as the basis. Maybe for this reason, there is a difference in the number of cases between social welfare department and the police.
In that case, uh the figures kept by the S W D should be lower. Because you have, you, you, you're referring to the number of times you have received the complaints. You say you don't have this box in your system. So I'm worried that. Uh referral may not happen, you don't make sure that the referral to the S W D would happen when you receive a complaint. Uh we want to safeguard the best interest of children. So we want to make sure that the, the case would be uh looked into by social workers. It's the, the social work perspective, it's not just, it's not about law enforcement. Uh can you make sure that under your system, the, a child abuse case will be referred to social workers all the time? I will look into that. Mister Alok Him, four minutes. I may not need all four minutes. Uh just want to offer some comments, but uh wel- uh welcome responses. One seven, SB one seven eight. This is how I see it. My, it's my observation. I hope the Commissioners and Directors won't mind this. There's a discrepancy of the uh terms and conditions of uh. Employment of different um discipline services. You have a commission to look into the differences, including the, the rankings. And the pay and conditions of service. I just want to make sure that the things would be allied among different discipline services. Uh Commissioner of Police has told us that you will be able to make up. Or reduce the shortfall, so eighty percent, but for the F S D, it's just seventy odd percent this year. And the C S D has been talking about a waste stage and turnover of, of their staff, because of the working environment. And the terms and conditions of employment. That's why I want to raise this question. I'm, I'm not saying that a particular service should be a better pay or. Now the police have achieved an eighty percent target of quarter provision, but you know that the. The waiting time for P R H is more than five years. So I would like to say this in response to the Commissioner of Police's remarks. I've been an organizer of a, a public protest and possessions for some years. I think good communication is important. Well, you know that. I don't think I'm regarded as a dangerous element. I have seen communication problems with the, the police that handles this, and since we have. Someone from the I P C C here as well. When we deal with public possessions. In, in the past, the practice was fairer during the uh time of Mister Jack Shiu Tong. Where you, they, you see, you try to meet everyone, but not now. So uh, Secretary, any response? Mister Ngao has raised a number of questions. Mister Ngao has raised a number of questions which he had already um put. Uh some time ago, we heard him. Uh my colleagues would uh look at ways and means to respond to those views and suggestions. Last member to speak, Mister Yich, thank you Yik, two questions. One six six. And that is the so called. The cracking down of passenger, unauthorized passenger service of vehicles. There were fewer than one hundred cases, but we have more than. Uh we have tens of thousands of vehicles involved in such illegal operations. We know that the penalties will be increased under a proposal from the Transport and Housing Bureau. I hope the police will step up its efforts. I know recently something has been done. And it's been advertised that you have a category one or category uh driving license. You can lease a car, you don't need to own a car, and you can join the operation. And one one seven, question one one seven. Is the uh era. On the part of the Transport and Housing Bureau, so we don't have sufficient parking spaces. Commissioner, there was a the. Protest of P L P L Bs in Changyi, and they refused to work. Because they've never taken into account when car parks are planned. And then there was another case. Uh P L Bs were given tickets extensively, and they. Tried to stage a strike. And then it was canceled after mediation. I hope when these mini buses do not cause obstruction, I know there are people who. Uh usually frequently lodge complaints. You have to understand that mini buses have got nowhere to to park. Commissioner. Thank you, Mister Yik, for your suggestions. You mentioned those unlicensed, unauthorized passengers uh. Service, well, we would take full action and if evidence is available. As for parking. We have been under pressure to step up enforcement against illegal parking, as I've said. Uh illegal parking is caused by many factors. Of course, there are more, one of the factors is that the number of vehicles exceed the number of parking spaces. Since two twenty fourteen, we have been issuing one million or so tickets. Uh we issue one million or so tickets. Uh in twenty eighteen, the number has increased to two million, but it seems that the problems have not been resolved. We need to work with other departments. We would do our best to balance the rights of the complainant and the company need. And we'll be balanced in our approach in law enforcement. Where people just indiscriminately park their vehicles, affecting the the public, you should tow the vehicle away. You shouldn't just give a ticket. Uh Mister Xiao Ka Chun, four minutes.
First of all, I would like to thank the Security Bureau. And the uh the staff of. Our departments, one Hong Kong is one of the safest cities in the world, many visitors are amazed in finding that out. So I have a question about. Visitors or problem with too many. Visitors. Tourism. Is very important for other industries in Hong Kong, such as retail and wholesale. During the occupation central movement and also the subsequent. Action taken by some to the cake, the luggage of of visitors. The sales volume dropped at one point by more than twenty percent, and because of the reduction in income. Some of those practitioners were unable to pay their mortgage, and some were forced to change jobs and work in construction sites. So tourism is important for our economy. Uh it's important that we have tourists coming to Hong Kong. Don't give anyone the wrong impression that we don't welcome tourists, there was a. A procession, a public procession in the North District, I've been told by some of my constituents in the retail center. There was an immediate drop of thirty percent in business volume after that. And now we have seen a downward trend of the business volume by say some ten percent. I know that's the concern of in certain districts about the numbers of visitors. We know that in Tok Kwan and Karun City, there are people who use the facilities there to board the. Cruises and or. Vessels, sightseeing vessels. You should try to make arrangements uh so that they the operation will be smooth and without, and will not cause problems. Don't give people the impression that we don't welcome mainland visitors. We know that there are video cams on the body of police, some police officers. Many, let's call it supportive, many people also support the introduction of this equipment. Because you have people who try to provoke the police officers, and the video. Uh recording would be useful if there's a prosecution in court. And there are the unscrupulous taxi drivers trying Lang Kua Fong or the P. Can you catch more of them and impose heavy penalties on them? Commissioner?
We have two thousand two hundred and sixty body ones, video cameras, we are going to buy more in the coming year. In the newest generation of uh. Communication device, on one thousand of them, there will be the incorporation of video recording function. We hope that by twenty twenty one, every officer will be given one. So we buy one, then our communication devices will also be. Video recording ready, and as for the taxi operations, we would gather our intelligence and do more. The next meeting will be held at three thirty P M, that's the end of this session, thank you.